All right, meeting is open at six o'clock. Okay, do you guys get a chance to look at the minutes? Do you need a couple?
No, I make a motion. June sixth. As written.
Second. Any discussion? On favor?
I.
I.
And June thirteenth, I make a motion that they. Except that as written.
Second. Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
I. Alright, you got the originals here for signature. Um, Bruce Wyman, you wanna come on down? Welcome. It's always a good and a bad thing when you're here because it means that summer's almost over, which is slightly depressing. Yeah, the Westfield Fair just happened. I would just do this. Yeah.
Absolutely. My annual visit to the select or just. Inform everybody that the fair is going to be operational this year. For coming up to you. Having forced hiatus in COVID, so. It'll be a. An interesting return. Focusing on the fact that we're back. And fundamentally unchanged still. I hope it there.
Mm-hmm.
And for the whole, for the most part, not a lot of. Extraordinary changes. I made arrangements with the. Massachusetts State Police. As we've done the last twenty years, we've already copied their coverage for us Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And. And early on, I, I, not, not very recently, early on, I just. Obviously, she's moving. Or she just became aware.
Mm-hmm.
Of the bears. Probably touch bases with him. The next two days, just confirm that.
Okay.
He does his own walk through inspection type.
Does the building inspector usually go with him or no? Um, and the waters, you're all set with water turned on?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know you just usually get it turned on this time of year or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, the. We allocated some money for the fence. Is that something for next year you're planning?
Um. At the actual earliest, it would be next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um. The, I think what I feel about the application. Um. The, I, I know that there's, I think the video was that. Want that fence repaired. And nobody wants to spend more than we do. But. And it's a cosmetic thing as well as a security.
Mm-hmm.
Issue. Um. But there are other issues on the very ones that might require. Earlier attention than that fence, but the intent would be yes. To repair that. That's like, I, I believe. Uh, I made it clear that we would. Did not necessarily, in the, in the after dating process. Um. We would not necessarily be committed because I don't think there was a. Um. Stipulation that it was specifically one of the banks, but every tank. Is in one way, shape, manner, form to repair that. So I know there's one. We have a lot of concern about it because the cosmetics and the security, and I know that there. In the community would like to see it repaired as well.
So that grant is pretty specific.
Well, I mean, there is, it is about facade improvements and place making and build beautification. Uh. So. I mean. I don't know if we can get more specific than that, but.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I would be concerned about the amount of time that the money sat. Um, it would end up, would it roll over to general?
Yeah, I mean, we would at least like to identify any contractors who would be undertaking the work. Uh, possibly.
Am I, am I hearing? What am I hearing about the money as far as the construction?
So we need to actually spend the money, um, which means that we're not just cutting you a check. We need to see, um. The, the contractor, we need to see invoices, we need to, you know, actually have what we're spending.
That's, that's news to me. Uh, it was not explained to me that way, nor did I get that from. The application.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding was the check would be cut. Because it was disposable or discretionary. Uh, funding.
We will be audited, um, to see how the money is spent, so we have to be carefully tracking where it's going. Um, so for example, the Blanford store did some facade improvement. Um, we received invoices, um, and then that way can store those as proof that the money was spent. Wow, in the area that the, the grant was meant for.
Okay, I, I understand right now, you said that was not clarified.
Okay.
Either in the application process or when I was discussing this with. It is so. That. That basically sheds a different light on the timeline.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I can, I can tell you, I don't like her. Um. If it were, uh, initiated. This fall. It would not be completed because, uh, the allocation was six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And that is nowhere near going to be enough to complete the project.
Okay, um, so I would say maybe, I know that you guys have a busy time now when you meet, um, because of the fair coming up, but maybe. Um, when it's over to, to come up with, uh, you know, a concrete, more concrete plan so that you can get it spent. I know you need it and you need to spend it somewhere, so, um. If you can do that and then get back to us, so we have some ideas and we can make sure that we get the, the money over to you guys. Um, we definitely want to be as helpful as we can with passing grant money along to the fair. Um, I think that we've been pretty. Um, good about that in the last couple of years with all, any of the ARPA money coming in and stuff, so. We're happy for you to spend it. We just wanna make sure that it gets spent.
Could you do six thousand dollars worth? And, you know, for attempt, you know, get it done so it's paid this fall with a contractor? And then. Continue when you said you were, I assume you were looking at money from the fair to finish it?
Uh, yeah, I.
So.
Once, once we start.
I.
In one way, shape, manner, form, we've gotta do something that would complete, not necessarily. The total finished product, if you will, but would get us to the point where, um. It would be a viable.
Yeah.
Project for the six thousand.
Maybe just the frontage there? The front on, on North Street?
By the barn?
Six, yeah.
That's.
The intent is the corner of the northwest.
Where it's caved in on the barn there?
The intent is from the northwest corner of the, of the property line.
Mm-hmm.
To the, uh, intersection of the main double gate.
Okay.
It's, it's probably off the top of my head, three hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And, and. Um. One way, shape, manner, form, based on what you're telling me now. We'll get that six thousand dollars spent. For. Prep and as far as we can go.
Great.
But it may not be the finished product that we want.
Mm-hmm. Well, we may be getting more ARPA funding in, is that correct?
There could be other funding sources coming down the pike, so we'll keep an eye out, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and getting started on this fall would be fantastic.
I think that sounds great.
And then I think usually with grant funding, when they see that we've invested in something, right, then we, then we can sort of plead for, you know, a little bit to finish off or whatever, might be helpful.
It would be important that people understand that it may not get initiated this fall because. Um, you know, living in this region, unfortunately, not as bad as the regular, and unfortunately, it's just. Um, weather timeline.
Sure.
So it may well be in the spring before it gets initiated.
As long as it would be before July and then we start to get into some budget situation.
I don't see an issue with that.
Okay. Great. Um, so not a lot of major changes. The fair is pretty as is, same ticket price to get in and all of that stuff for you guys this year.
Nothing changed.
Nothing changed. Um, do you have people, a lot of, of people coming up for rides, um, to set up rides and whatnot?
The. The ride business in Massachusetts. Or. Uh. Small to midsize fairs is extremely challenging.
Mm-hmm.
There are, I'm gonna tour through at least two major. Um. Large. Commercial ride vendors in Massachusetts.
Mm-hmm.
They are committed. Uh, annually to the same venues and have been for years. Starting probably the fifteenth of April and going until the fifteenth of October.
Mm-hmm.
We were fortunate enough to have a ride vendor. Uh, out of Connecticut for the better part of seventy years. And they were. Uh, it managed from father to sons. And the sons retired and closed the business down. We've had two or three smaller vendors. Uh, with rides, uh, in the last five to six years. For various reasons, most of which are. Uh, directly attributable, attributable to them. They elected not to come back more than one year at a time. Um. One of the. More challenging things is operating in Massachusetts. For rides has become extremely, uh, regulated.
Mm-hmm.
And the, uh, smaller ride vendors. Can perform in surrounding states. Where a lot less regulation. And a lot better return for their investment because of the regulation. Uh, and regulations. So that, um. We've not had rides, uh, the last, uh, prior COVID. And right now. We have been unable to secure a ride vendor.
Hmm.
Um. I don't see a change in any immediate future because of the regulatory process and the size and scope. Of the right vendors. As I've said, there's two or three major vendors. Uh, in fact, uh, two of them chased us. Uh, from the early seventies to probably. Uh, the early two thousands.
Mm-hmm.
And we continue since we got a ride vendor, we got a ride vendor, and they've been here. For seventy years and they understood that.
Do you know who Covington Fair uses? I know they have quite a bit of rides over there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're one of the bigger ride companies that have been going and coming here since years and this.
So, um. Has you, like, what ideas? Um, I'm just curious, since I have you here, um, have, have your group come up with, um. To increase foot traffic for the fair? Are there any significant thoughts for?
Being. Cool.
That's so weird.
Yeah. An alcohol tent would be huge.
Yeah, it would, it would, um. It was the character of the doctor as it was when we did it. Uh. To the family oriented. Fair.
I didn't say for the kids.
I. I'm just, I, I'm just, I know people coming to me with suggestions, you know, just because I have.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
The final year, we, we had a beer and wine to end the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We were a. Three day fair at that point. There was, uh. The setup. Of the, of the distribution for sales and beer and wine. Occurred on Friday night when the fair was being set up. Obviously, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Um. There were numerous incidents. Nothing. To the point where it was escalated out of control.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But during the day. There was. An, uh, elevated. Um. Number of individuals who couldn't recognize the inside or the outside of the label on the photos.
Yeah, and, and that was in, what, the eighties was when you guys had?
No, it was as early as the late sixteen, seventies, et cetera.
So, um, I thought, sure, I just, I don't wanna go too long. I'm just, absolutely, yep.
So we were planning that the. Uh. Incident of families. Coming in on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was being reduced because of the presence and.
I disagree with that, but that's alright.
So, um. The final year that we had, uh, alcohol. We, our net proceeds. Were, um. Roughly three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The rider for just having alcohol in the fair.
Was, yeah.
Thirty-five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So we were paying five hundred dollars. Considerable aggravation.
Sure.
And made the decision we don't wanna do this. The following year. Then really, uh, we, we. Made it clear we were not serving alcohol anymore. And the following year, um. You couldn't walk without drinking only stores and small kids. Uh, and it increased our dependence on families considerably.
Sure.
Therefore, we said, I saw something we're gonna do again.
So, um, I'm not a drinker. I'm not an advocate of alcohol personally, um, but I do, I do think that, um. So just flat out real quick before we, um, move on unless these guys have questions. Um, I really, really want the fair to succeed. I think that there needs to be some, some really progressive, uh, new innovative ideas to make that happen because I think. Nationally, fairs are struggling. I would love to see, and we would love to support the union, union agricultural society with coming up with some new ideas. Um, as we've shown, I think with helping to move grant funds along, we're happy to help support that. But I hear on one hand that there's, you know, there's no rides, which I'm not faulting you at all, which doesn't draw kids. Um, and then we have, you know, the beer and wine tent, which might draw adults and, um, you know, and that's not happening either. And so I guess I'm just, I'm concerned with the low. Volume we've seen at the fair and I just, I really want to, to let you guys know that we are available to help and we wanna help financially. We'd love to see some new ideas and stuff.
So we, and we're, we're working in that direction and we can, we'll face.
Awesome.
But we will. Our, in, our attendance increased appreciably. Whether we did or whether the alcohol. And we find that, um. It, it just is very challenging to, um. Control and police.
Sure, you're the expert in fairs, not me.
I got a quick, quick. Times have changed, as you and I know, and, and these microbreweries, they sure fill them up with people.
Yes, they do.
And, and that's, I think, what she's headed for. I mean, I'm not a drinker anymore either. Thank God, um. Maybe you could have some of those guys in and take a cut of it. I'm thinking for the future, not tomorrow, but.
I do think that that's.
It's just amazing and they, they have a bin there and they just kill it. I mean, you can't even move with those places, so. Something, I think she's saying, let's look at some of that stuff, maybe. That's my opinion, but.
Take a look at some of that new data and see statistically what.
And I know we've had problems up there years ago when they had a concert and someone got killed leaving there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but. People, the, the society is definitely different. Today than it was twenty years ago, ten years ago. People go out. They wanna have two or three beers with their meals. They wanna enjoy, have a glass of wine. And it, it's pretty a commonplace now. I mean, I'm sure you see it up where you live around the. The hills, right? Just saying.
Sure, a lot of them offer. Do you have anything?
No.
Oh.
I, I've always believed that for. Four days out of the year, Blanford was a destination, not a place to drive through.
Sure.
And I think. Like, I was involved with the, with the fair as a vice president for twenty-eight years. And, uh. Through all this, we've seen. After the beer booth went away to beer and wine, that we went up, we had attendance that were unbelievable. And then when the state started regulating all the rides.
Mm-hmm.
That was one step, but then they increased regulation and they increased it. Now every time a vendor came in with rides. And set them up, they had to be inspected again.
Sure.
And I mean, I mean, safety, safety, but. When you're driving these people out. What's gonna happen? Now we're in competition. With, with the, uh, if you don't get a show involved with your fair. You're pretty much done for rides. You, everybody's been to the eastern states.
Sure.
Back in the day. People would leave Blanford Fair. Go to the eastern states and set up.
Mm-hmm.
And they would pay ahead of time to get their spot, this, that, and the other things. But as the shows got bigger. These private vendors were being pushed out. They, and they used to be on the midway, now they're on the side lot. Next thing you know, they're in the back lot, and that was, was happening. So all the small vendors now. They're pretty much out of business.
Yeah.
So we have to rely on shows and like first, uh, said. These shows in, in Massachusetts, if there's three or four of them, we're lucky. And then. When they come in, they just take over everything. They say, okay, here's some money, everything else is ours.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's how, it's, it's, it's hard to.
Sure.
Move in that direction when there's a limited amount of shows. So I think, you know, the fair is trying to do what's very best, but it's an uphill battle.
You're also on limited funds.
Oh, yeah.
It's a competitive situation that you guys go in against.
The major ride vendors. One is located in Southern Hampshire. And the other one is located. In, in Pittsburgh, Western Mass.
Mm-hmm.
And they just, they nod their heads. To us and say, we'd like to help you out, but.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, it's the same thing. We don't have enough. Uh, large show do more than one venue. And treat it decently.
Mm-hmm.
And the vendors that we do. Hey guys, we're going there for thirty-five, forty years. Now, would you like it if, if somebody came into you for thirty-five, forty years and all of a sudden said. Hey, man, come in there and go, we're going somewhere else. And, and they have a warranty and they expect more of the return. And that's what made the business happen.
Mm-hmm. Well, just know that we are supportive and it is a priority for us to bring life back to the fair and to maintain it because we understand how important it is to Blanford. Um, so anything we can do, Christopher's gonna continue to direct grants your way. Um, it's something that's been actively talked about. We talk about businesses in town, so, um. So just so that if you come up with ideas, please pass them our way and we'll see what we can do to help.
Well, I think that, that there is a two-way street. I think. You know, a lot of people in town who have ideas should come forward. I mean.
Sure.
The, the Blanford Fair is not a closed group.
Yeah.
They're always open for new members and especially people who have ideas. And all we ask is if you come in with an idea, help us to pursue it. Or help them pursue it.
Yeah, we, we established at various times. Um. Invitations for ideas and suggestions.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, we were, we were concerned the first, uh. Two or three years with the Florida Trump.
Mm-hmm.
We were concerned that there would be adverse noise, that town residents would object to. We managed to work through that.
Uh, and that's a big draw, I know.
It is, it is a large draw.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Interestingly enough, if you look at the attendance at the draw. Uh, at the Florida Trump polls.
Mm-hmm.
And you were counting the individuals at any given time over the course of the evening. You'll find that the, uh. Funding for that. Is not offset. By the people attending.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to look at whatever we do for an event. To make sure that it's cost effective. And when an event costs us more than it generates in revenue.
Mm-hmm.
We've gotta relook at that and say. Now, in addition to that, we've taken on a responsibility to try to conduct a snowmobile, external event.
Mm-hmm.
We've, we've taken on the, uh, adding a horse show during the summer. Um. All of which is staffed by volunteers.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Which will, it, it's predicated on the fact, well, choose our help. Okay, can you be here listening? Or no, I can't make a thing. Well, when can you? Well, I'll let you know, I'll give that. And, um, so I think, uh. Mr. Cruz knows, statement relative to, you know, two ways through that, fine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, nothing wrong with an idea. And, and if it gets. To the point where it becomes a viable, uh, process, that's great. If it doesn't, it may generate another idea that opposite. But it, it doesn't do, uh. The organization any good to, uh, have people come forward and say, you should do this. You wanna help? Well, no, I can't.
We understand that.
That's. Mr. Allen's comment, that's society today.
Yeah.
Do you, so, um, just in interest of time, do you have anything else that you need from us this evening? Any approvals or anything? You're good.
I'm good to go. I just.
Okay.
I have to make sure that you understand our security.
So I think, just one last quick one.
Yeah.
So whatever you sell for tickets, you should buy some lottery tickets out of it.
Maybe.
I'm, I'm just saying.
Not with my luck.
No.
Well, mine either. If I bought nine out of ten, I'd lose, so.
Well, I'll be at the gate on Saturday, so. I'm, I'm volunteering. I'll be at the gate on Saturday doing tickets, so.
You.
I'll see you there.
I'm meeting doors tomorrow as well and get it. On the outdoors, home.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll be out of town.
Yep.
Good. Did you agree to that?
Yes. I am, uh, my mother and I are on John Cream.
Oh, okay, you're working for the South.
Uh, I thought we were selling tickets. Yeah, South Gate, South Gate. That's the one. I knew I'm doing something. I don't know.
If, if you do a shift on the South Gate.
Yeah.
And you find it extremely exciting.
Okay.
We have a.
Listen, my daughter is almost old enough to, to throw her in there as a volunteer as well, so, okay.
South Gate's covered, the North Gate is covered.
Center gate, okay. If, if I am so, okay. See, you need to start a volunteer and then they just suck it out of you.
I'll be out of town, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks.
I know, but I'll be out of town, leaving Friday.
Thanks for coming in, Bruce. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, um, Jennifer was going to get me the schedule, that trifle. And she said she was waiting for approval and then she's homesick today, so I haven't been able to speak with her. Do you have that? Do you have it available?
Not yet.
Who would have it?
As soon as we get it, um, in the, in the process, we'll get it to you.
I need it. As soon as possible.
Trust me, I'm aware of that. Several people are in need of it and just as soon as it hits, um. Finalization. Then we'll get it to you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Chips, you're up next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we, is a window open? Probably. How are you? What's this fluorescent green paper you have?
That is the final, final of our week plus, uh, I have one where.
There, I'll throw my name. The only good idea is to work as a team.
Pass one down.
I'm just, I, we don't have to go over any of this thing. And now I just wanna make sure that you are updated on everything and, and. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay.
Uh, the whole, uh, actually, the week starts off, off this page. Uh, on Saturday is the Del Canto, the last part of our summer concert series.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at two o'clock and that's the twenty-seventh. Uh. Uh, time that we have done this twenty-seven years, uh. Whereas it's pretty, pretty amazing. An interesting thing about, uh. How activities, the Del Canto will be using the, uh, the clubs. Uh, rooms for rent.
Mm-hmm.
And there'll be powers there and, and, uh, I haven't spent the last three nights there because of some construction in my house. It's something that we, every, everybody should be aware that we have, uh. Some nice rooms at the clubs that are available all. All summer long. There, we, we'll rent, we need to think about. The fact that we don't have a, um. Other, other places around that is there and people should be reminded of it.
Yeah.
Um, the, and, um. So we started off on, on Sunday, um, Nancy actually got a little one for the blueberry tea altogether. We're serving only, only, uh, American or non-British tea because next to Boston Tea Party.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, will be, uh, celebrated, uh, uh, over in the old cemetery across the way at, at one thirty and, uh, everybody.
Uh, over in the old cemetery across the way at, at one thirty and, uh, everybody is invited to come. I don't know any member, I, I, I believe one member I know of the board is such as going to be there and, uh. Anybody else who possibly can do, um, you're, you're more than welcome to, to come. It's gonna be fun that the, the, uh. Tea Party Museum people being all in Wigania and, uh, they, their press will be there in the big time and, and, uh. It will be, uh, a lot of fun that Samuel Soper, uh, the, uh, person being honored. Uh, by the time he died, he was a colonel in the area, uh, and, uh, and served on, uh, the board's like.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
A number of times and we'll have a little bit more material on him. But he was really quite an interesting person. We've had one of the fun things that we have, we discovered that, uh, there is a shoemaker in town. And as we have the, this wonderful book of all his, his, uh, accounts. And there's, uh, we have Colonel Sopers, all the things, all the boots that were made. Fascinating kind of artifact. Um, anyway, and, and, uh, on Tuesday, Peter Piro is all. Excited about running the open mic, uh, operation, uh, six o'clock is the time that, for anybody who wants to. And, and, uh, he, uh, uh, is, is got a number of people who've approached him already and excited about doing it. I think it's gonna be a very, uh, wonderful thing. It could be something that is repeated, uh, multiple times, maybe next year. Uh, and once we see, get a feel for the, the, uh, finding reception guests, very excited about that. Ron Hess, uh, on Wednesday will be leading the, the Manonite hymn scene and, uh. The Manonites, uh, and hopefully the weather, which will be looking long-term, it makes, it look a little, little iffy in terms of the outside. Um, the fair, uh, afterwards, but it's a potluck kind of thing that the Manonites will put him on right after, after their hymn scene. And then Thursday, uh, the Dean Building's Roundtable, um, actually, uh, one of the, the. Participants is in the room back here, uh, uh, that, that, uh, they, they're going to be there. And they very hard is joining the whole thing, as I understand it. And, and, um, we're gonna have copies of, of Dr. Dean's will. Which is quite fascinating. He, uh, suggested that the, the, the building wasn't built to his specs by, in three years. And money comes back to his, uh, all his, uh, dependents or whatever. And that, uh, also the, the, uh, lowering on the, uh, front of the building must be at the same size as the Porter. Uh, Memorial Library, uh, saying, uh, uh, it was the Dean Building. So.
Interesting, okay.
Kind of thing. And Friday, the, the fair opens at, uh. Uh, and Saturday, um, all day long, this, this reunion that, uh. Uh, Gary has worked very hard to, to put together will be going on and part of it, you know, the parade will, uh, start down. And, uh, our, uh, parking lot right outside here and, uh, anybody, uh, who is interested. I don't know if there's gonna be a possibility of, uh, representation from, from, uh, uh, the cycle, but, um. Um, it's, uh, any, any way of speaking for, uh, people can ride in cars and bikes, uh, walk, uh, whatever. And, uh, we all expected the amount of parade, but, but led by the, the, uh, Coleo Californian, uh, pipers. It should be raised a little bit of interest and, and fun to, 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 uh, get it going. Uh, the fire department is all on board and we're gonna have a chat with our new, um, uh, police chief. And, and, uh, our, our pastor was very excited about being involved with as well. So, so that's, um, whatever. Um, and when, when, whatever, uh, appears or works, works out, uh, uh, is great. The whole parade will end up in front of the church. We'll have a nice ceremony there. Um, uh, we have, uh, our, um, current St. Rep will be there among other people. And, uh, it'll be really a fun.
Oh, great.
Fun, fun time, time. And, uh, we'll be, uh, uh, ringing the bell. Uh, probably with a rope outside the window like it was done in the old days.
I was just gonna say that. We always did that when we had our bonfire at the fairgrounds.
Ends in the, uh, ceremony, um, we'll do that. And that will be telling the fairground that the pipers will be on the way. And we're sharing the pipers, uh, uh, with the fair. They was marching in and, and, uh, they would, will, uh, they would, uh. Not a, a grand performance, but we go down the midway and then over to the grandstand and, and, uh. Play a little bit before, uh, everybody. So just trying to make. A, a community-wide that kind of activity. But that's the, that's the, the plan at this point. And, uh, Bruce is all, uh. Said that we're gonna have a, a phone call if they're on their way, uh, young, listening to the bells playing. And, uh, that, um, is, uh, what's going on there. And then they, um. On Sunday, the, the congregational, uh, church, uh, uh, Gary was very interested in trying to have a service. It was like eighteen twenty-two, uh, and there's, uh, I, uh, uh. Then do you, do you remember the pastors, the, the person was here that?
Uh, Scott King.
Okay, that anybody who wants to know who.
I know who he's.
Yeah, yeah, right. And, and, uh, he, he, uh, now being a pastor, but grew up here and, and was delighted about trying to do a little research as to what it might have been like. And so that'll be one of the other things happening there is that we have these, uh, names. I think it's the son of the current mayor of Blanford, England, is, uh, in Connecticut. And he is going to be at this service. Uh, there is a video that has been made by the, uh, the. Uh, board, uh, that runs the, uh, uh, Blanford Forums Call. It's the, the Blanford of England. Uh, they made a video for us. It's going to be projected as, as part of the service. And, and, uh, uh, then he's going to be giving us special gifts from Blanford, England. Uh, on recognizing the, the church's, uh, two-hundredth anniversary. And, and we will be reciprocating, uh, with, uh, various, uh, gifts that we've lined up for.
Well, that's neat.
The other, other thing that is still in the very, uh, unsolved planning stage. Is that the Springfield Symphony has been looking for venues, uh, to have small groups, uh, be able to perform. And the problem is funding them, of course. And because this is Labor Day. There is, I, I'm not sure which labor union is, but there's a labor union in Springfield that is, uh, has. Offered, uh, the possibility of a grant that will, um, pay for the, the. Uh, Springfield Symphony's brass quintet, which if this comes through in the next two or three days, uh, which it may. Uh, it, they, they will be, uh, performing at, uh, probably two or three o'clock on Sunday afternoon in the church. And it'll be free for everybody. All of these things, everything on the page is free, except all this in the end to the fair. And, uh, that is a little problem. Any, any questions or?
That's not, you guys have done, put a lot together.
We're excited about, uh, and we'll, um. Peter Ham, the, the fellow who is in charge of the restoration. Well, I, I forgot to say one other native thing. Whether with the, the, um, person who will be the, uh, uh, grand master of the, the parade or the. Parade marshal, uh, will be summer, uh, and he's all excited about it.
Oh, that's wonderful.
We'll have it going game. Lead the, uh, the, uh, the parade, uh, of the, of the lives.
Cool.
A special thing and, and, uh, uh, Jim Crane is going to guide him.
Nice.
Fun little touch. And we have, uh, the, the Manonites, I think, they put, uh, uh, something in the parade and, uh. Um, anybody else who wants, maybe, maybe, uh, the, uh, uh, D-Dog, uh, might have one of his trailers. Any, anyway, we can, uh, advertise, uh, the, what we do in town. Anybody has any ideas that, uh, of that sort, uh, please let us know. Anyway, just gonna put a couple of these around that.
Okay, great. And some at the library, did you? You might even get some to schools only because the kids are back on the thirty-first. So if you wanna send any out to the Chester Elementary School or the middle school, you, you could get some people the end. Joanne knows. How do we get stuff into this? Just bring them.
Oh, really?
Chips, if you just bring a stack of flyers to Chester Elementary and let them know, they'll get them out for you.
Maybe we got a police chief that could bring them to Chester since she's there. I'm just saying.
You know the name of the foe from the United Kingdom?
I do not, uh, 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 I have, we'll, we'll, Gary Hart is the one that's been doing all the negotiating and has the film and. Uh, it, it's really quite delightful. They, the, uh, they, uh, have a little bit of the film as in one of their meetings. And, and they, uh, uh, the, all members of the, of the council, uh, give a hip, hip parade.
Cool.
Fun and upbeat and whatever, uh, that's the name again.
Let us know if you need anything.
Where can we get some T-shirts? I've seen one today. I like it.
What was that? There's T-shirts?
We, we do.
You left out that part?
Well, we do have T-shirts.
All right, where do we get them?
And you'll be, you'll get them all over the place, uh.
At the store?
Uh, not, not yet, uh, with the sign at the store, but with, uh, uh, Gary Hart has been in charge of all and, and, uh, there are two pines. One has all of the elevations of, uh, in town, a sign that is on the back.
Oh, cool. Yeah.
And then the, the other one has just a big church in the back. And then they each have, uh.
Can I get one before the parade?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I can get it. Is that fair?
Yeah, sure.
Is that where I get them?
Uh, they're going to be, uh, they're gonna all week long, for all of these events, they'll be, they'll be there for sale. You, you don't, uh, they'll be, uh, they're in the church right now. Gary's got a freight supply of them right there and got it all set up as a little store.
Are there hoodies?
And, and, uh, they're not hoodies. They're just, uh, they're just plain.
Can I Venmo? Do they accept Venmo or credit card?
Uh, I, uh, at this point, I think it's probably cash or check.
We're gonna need to Venmo.
Get us, uh, in the next two days, uh, or jazz up there.
Yeah, that would be, that would be nice. No one has cash anymore. I am so excited. We have needed Blanford T-shirts for a long time.
Oh, good. Did you get my email about those two monuments?
I did. But now which one are we talking about?
The, the two, the two slate.
The, the slate one says he said brownstone and that, that, you know, I didn't know what.
Yeah, the ones that we have the paper around.
Yeah, okay. And that, I, I can't speak for the Historical Society to say, you know, two thousand dollar. Uh, here it is, but we'll, we will bring it up and, and.
Yeah, bring it up.
That, the, this, this is a, a, a major issue here in town with the old cemetery stones. That have no connection anymore to any family that are falling apart. We had, um, a, uh, family, the Blair family. Uh, were in two days ago. And one member of the Blair family said they want to go after all the Blair stones. And they were, uh, and really to resurrect them because it means so much. And these are, uh, young people were from Florida. And, and the father was from Southern. Yeah, and, and, uh, this is the kind of thing, somehow we have to have a vehicle that says to the world. Uh, particularly when they contact us, uh, for information on, on genealogy at times. Hey, here's, here is the kind of fund that, and, and the, the, the problem is we don't want, want to try to, to sell it. And simply give Blanford this money and they'll, they'll get around and maybe using it for the cemetery. It's got to be, this is money for this. And whether you have to go through a nonprofit, uh, corporate structure. Uh, friends of the, of, of the cemetery or. Uh, go other, someone to root is something we.
Does cemetery have a revolve?
No, we don't.
Um, we could definitely do something on the website. Is this on the website? Just, I was just merging those two things in my head. Okay, cool.
And, and, but, but at this part of it, but as far as the stones go, that's, that's a long.
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed. They, they, the Ludlow people, now you, you've got, you heard the story about when they, they, uh, contacted us. And we went over and found the stone. It was, I'm gonna say, angled like this. And we got the Ludlow monument of the. Uh, uh, out and we, we realized that they had been doing a big, big job in, in Amherst. Redoing the entire Amherst Cemetery. And, and so I called them up and said, hey, we got this emergency. We got the bear, there's these guys coming from the museum from Boston that, that are so terrible. And they were up here as a father-son team. They were awesome. They have a lot of knowledge. And I, I, uh, TJ, I had a chance to, to, to see them and, and, uh, they were here for, uh, maybe six hours. They got it all backed up nicely straight. And they, they had to get everything done because they're, they, they, they had to meet a deadline. And on the, the twenty-fourth of August, they were spending three weeks in Nantucket redoing the cemeteries of all of that.
They're visiting people.
That sounds like a good place to be.
As, as I indicated, they gave us a, uh, mystery, uh, to strong.
The, the, they, yeah, they, they, the, the, the two stones that are in really horrifically. They have a sad situation. One has been flat on the ground. And the other is that the foundation is ready to go. These are the third minister and his wife of the town.
And do we have funding in our cemetery account to fix things like that?
Well, we do have some, but, uh, I can't extend much of it now because we have another monument problem.
Okay.
That, uh, Christopher is taking to the insurance company. And hopefully if they come forward, then the cemetery will be willing.
Then we can have, okay.
You know, but I, I, I have to be cautious.
We'll keep us posted if we need to see.
And by the way, we brought the Blair family up here. They had an infant death.
Oh.
And, uh. Uh, it, it was very sad, but when they, because their families had walked around the cemetery and that. And that's what inspired them to approach Chipper about, you know. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chip.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion to skip. So, new business, see one-room schoolhouse, Iber Road, Linda Barner. Yes. Um, is there a second? Discussion on fair. So, welcome.
Thank you. And before I start, I'd like to say thank you to Tracy Allen for, you made it worth it going up here.
Looks really good up there.
Looks amazing. Yeah. Thank you, Chris, for going over to the Shepherd Farm and I will go forward with whatever's gonna happen. But I, I, I think that we've got a little momentum going. Let's get it done instead of bringing it up.
Fifty million times.
Yeah.
Forty-nine.
Um, sorry, Mary.
Get here.
Would you guys are, yes, thank you.
We're right on the microphone.
I know. Okay.
So I, I have a one-room schoolhouse on my property that, um, my grandmother and Jeff's grandmother went to school in. There's a picture of the girl.
That's awesome.
Outside of the schoolhouse.
Nice. I took a look at it the other day when I drove by.
It, it's interruption.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna say that it isn't, but I did see something in the newspaper, uh, a year or so ago. Wyden got a grant to, um, redo their one-room schoolhouse.
Okay.
It has to be a municipality, but I personally, I, I asked around. As a person, I can't get a grant, but as a municipality, you could possibly get a grant. And so when we had talked about the town common, we talked about putting the schoolhouse up where the meeting. Stone is, move it up there. And then there's also the funeral. Whatever, you know, have it up there, you know, as places where people, when they come to town, they can go in and see those. When that becomes more, when our town kind of becomes more of a common that.
Yep.
So, um, I'm willing to give you this little house, but I, I can't move it for you. I can't.
Yeah.
I can't, you know, and, and the reality is, if, if you don't take it and it isn't for a wristband, it's probably gonna involve them. The way, so. So you inherited this when you bought the property? Is that how that happened? Yeah, that's pretty cool. Um actually, I think uh. My great grandparent's going back three grades. Jeff's great grandparent's going back three grades. They built the house down in Nyberg in eighteen thirty five. So I don't know exactly when the schoolhouse was built. I do have a picture of um. A schoolhouse that they thought maybe it that was up on Russell Road.
Okay.
I'll leave you these pictures.
Thank you.
And if any of them moved down, they call that schoolhouse hill from Russell Road. And they think that that may be why that's called Schoolhouse Hill. I I don't know. I don't have any idea.
Wasn't it farther up on Nyberg too at one point past the old house?
It may have been. No, there was one up I hate there.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking that way. Okay.
Yeah, so we have to do some research on how we would even move this. Um so I think that that's our first step at research on. How we would move it um. What we need to do to the property to ready it. Um and then when it gets there, what kind of work we need to do and I'm. I'm assuming there are gonna be some grants available. I think that's how we sort of go about this.
Well, it might be worth checking with Wyden and seeing, you know, where they started.
Yeah, I know uh with the town of Leverton. Has one of these one room schoolhouses as well that they've done some work on, so.
I agree. It looks. Yeah, I mean, I don't envision that it's gonna be a quick process. I think that it's a pretty awesome um. Thing for for you to do for us, and I think that it would look really beautiful attached to our common up there. It could really add to it, you know.
The unglued thing across the whole back is the original Blackford.
That's so cool. I gotta check it out inside of it at some.
Let's do tours for it and we can raise some money to help move it. We can be, you know, descendants of it.
Yeah, yeah, sure. You guys gonna dress up?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, if it helps, of course I will.
Yeah, Linda gave me a tour, but one thing that we need to do is we gotta get a park over that.
Yeah, it needs, yeah, and and then we have carpet for the past few years.
Have you talked about connecting it all with um the white church and their efforts to raise? I know that so they've been clearly working and are continuing to raise funds to restore the church, which. I know is always a process, but I wonder any connection there with just re- restoration of another building in town if they would.
I don't I don't know whether they would be interested in restoring the whole building. I know that they are interested in having the Blackford.
Three million.
If you were the conversation anyways to say, uh if you know. Would any with the parking and everything that they do yearly of the concerts and everything, there's any portion that they might be interested in helping. With the movement of that, because I mean, the connection would be nice. You're gonna be right across the street. We're gonna they are having events. We can do some. I'm sure we'll come up with something.
And who's the gentleman that's drawn it? I can't remember his name. Uh Dennis Dennis Picard. He has come up and looked at it and he is involved with older schoolhouses. And he said it's not in that bad a shape.
Oh, that's good.
But I I think it's in pretty good.
Is he from East Hampton area? Or Comington?
Yeah.
Okay.
He he's come up here and done a couple of um events, um making shoes and.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll start. Welcome researching.
Maybe we could actually discuss Shepherd Farm while.
Oh, sure. Yeah, might as well.
Uh so first with respect to the town common, um so I did speak with GZA or consultant on that. Um they're gonna provide some updated renderings for the to the town common redesign. Um and I mentioned including that. The spot is taken at the very least. It sounded like there's a Hearst building as well that we could. That work in there. Uh the next step with them is gonna be speaking with uh Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Um because that's uh reconfiguration or Lanford Road is seems like we can kind of move forward on that.
So they said that's a dangerous intersection?
Yeah, well, so.
If you can name me an accident in the last seventy years there, I want you to because I can't.
I think what we thought when we were doing it was that would it would. Conjoin the town come. It takes the.
I know what you're thinking. I just I just think it's ridiculous and the subject for me, okay? And and a lot of people I know. Oh, you got you're right, and I agree with you, but I don't like it. I think it's just another waste of money personally.
Well, that actually the what they came to us and said was that um it's no longer allowed the.
Yeah, something about the configuration. I I mean, it never would have been.
Worse coming out in front of the highway garage and turning than it is coming out of that angle. You can see way better. I've lived here my whole life. I I think I know what I'm talking about.
Well, so we have the, you know, Mass DOT, you know, road experts working on it and they'll let us know what the what the safest.
I wanna see a write up on it.
Yeah, absolutely, but they will let us know what the safest exit is and what the best.
It's our road. Of course we do. It's our road. North Lanford is our road. It's not there. You know what they really need to do? Put a blinking light back at the top of the hill to slow everybody down. They're going up North Street out there. And it would help. I don't know when they took it down. I can't even remember twenty five years ago.
Oh, no, that was taken off by by plow about forty years ago.
Yes, you should.
Will you will you tell me more than thirty minutes ahead of the meeting like the other day?
So, yeah, so anyway, we'll have time to discuss that. Um and then we can kind of report. Finalizing plan for the town common and then, you know, looking at potential funding sources for actually implementing those changes. And then really quick on Shepherd Farm. Uh I got a new uh check out Shepherd Farm with.
Thank you.
With uh Jason, the building vector two weeks ago. Um so it definitely in that building has a lot of challenges um in the basement. Took the one of the walls collapsed. Um the attic looks amazing. I don't know how it's.
No?
So he, you know, he gave a very, very accurate nap and estimate about what would be needed to. Create to a place where it's stable and he said probably about forty thousand dollars at least. So that's that's out there. Um you know, on on other fronts with Shepherd Farm, I've talked to Shannon Walsh. Uh we're gonna have a call with um UMass about their program uh where they have students actually looking at some of these properties. Student project for the next uh six months.
Yeah, that's a great.
Figuring that out and hopefully out of that, we can come up with a couple of different ideas for the property. Um and then on third fronts, um you know, looking at the sort of land swap idea. Uh so we kind of dug through the records. Um essentially, you know, the idea of swapping it with this property behind Watson. That ran into the fact that the title is actually a little bit sketchy. Assume the town property, there's actually some lack of clarity.
Okay.
So if we wanna do that, uh we either need to probably. Hire some additional counsel or check with our current town council and see if they can handle that kind of. Or alternatively, since we are about to go through, you know, some tax takings, um identify a property through that.
Through that, that might be your best.
Title's clean.
Okay.
So so that's where we stand currently.
I think down the road after I think I love this idea with the um college students and helping to figure out what's going on. Um if. We end up in a place where we're looking at possibly spending money at Shepherd Farm, I would love to have. That brought to like the town meeting in your town meeting and then the townspeople can say. Whether they want us to spend money on that building or not, because what I hear is no, but then I heard some people say yes. So I would love just for at the meeting to have an actual vote of, do you guys want us to spend and?
Is there asbestos in that building? Uh you you well, because I've been told there's tons of it and I I've never been in there. I couldn't go that day. You asked me, but.
I I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, because that can be expensive to remediate. And they'd have to do that before they started working on it.
The other option is that we have um men like family and you you know, they will come in and and refurbish things and they wanted to. To take it, so maybe we could sell it as is.
You won't be able to sell it with asbestos in it, period. But other than that.
Yeah, and I don't know that there's.
No, if there is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Super, thank you.
Um.
Thank you. Yeah, please do. It says John Peebles and some country camera lovers.
They had turkey shoots there at one point.
Did they? We pardoned a turkey one year. A live turkey. We pardoned it. We did that. That happened. That actually happened here.
I know.
Oh, him? No, it wasn't him. No, it was a real turkey. Who's this guy?
I had to put my glasses on to see him. I know. Just teasing you, Dave.
How are you? What's new on the uh road front?
Um dear, I need to start the. Shimming Wesley.
You guys speak English, because I don't know what you're talking.
She thought it was a dance.
I was getting. I'll give you that.
And what are you shimming?
So what they do, Mary. It's the road like this.
Just just shimmy. What else you got?
Oh, Romeo. That coal shop, you still want that removed right in the core?
That yellow one? Yeah, it's totally busted the top. So we're getting one basketball hoop? Okay, and they're gonna paint the basketball court lines and everything? Somebody is.
Recreation, your heart, we can do that. It's a recreational piece of.
No, they have to the got people that are doing the blacktop are painting part of the quote was they're painting on that. Cool. I think it will. That'd be great. We'll have to have a little opening, something, celebration. Maybe maybe we can tie it in with Halloween if it's nice.
I haven't got a date.
Okay. All right, don't push it.
His reasons are all gone.
Okay.
And one on Russell Street.
You think those are really done? I don't. They're just dirt, man. They they should have some blacktop on it. They're they're installed, but they're not finished. Okay.
We are working up this.
I wanna know, because they fall in.
Now, a quick question. Who who did that, ring maker?
Yes.
All right, and what do they charge us for this?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand?
Yep, and I informed the board probably a month or no, actually back in. April and May timeframe that um I called Bellhole Construction Company. They told me they could not do it. They're busy. I had another company to look at. And then he would do five and that's the one over here. Yes, anyone that's.
The names on North Lanford, the Culvers, those those guys that are real nice job. Real nice job.
They they supplied all uh. Okay, except for the cops? Oh, okay. They came from us then. All right, so.
Yeah, I thought it was great. I had added prices for fourteen thousand, four thousand later. Add for Grand Lake.
Yeah, absolutely.
Working on pricing for pin lines for North Lanford once it gets that.
Okay.
Other part done. Uh I'm looking to have the diesel side of the diesel gas tank cleaned. Um we've had problems with that. Um a while ago, I stayed and talked about truck going down. To Matt like three times.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll find out that it was some corner of slime broken in the field. So um. I guess I I can't, I don't know when, how long ago it happened, but they took the filter, they took the filter off the diesel. Because I think what happened was that it was plugged and he used the music to cap it and kept on going. Um and then realized that the truck had problems. So but two two brand of builders on it. Probably four months ago, I replaced the diesel already. When they pulled it off, it was a full stop. And I I can't go without doing it.
How did they clean that? There is there a map hole they can go in?
I have the way that doing makes all most sense.
Yeah.
And then I have to hire a company. A waste management company. Yeah, I know what you mean.
Okay.
It's not cheap.
No.
I had an oil spill from me to you on an oil line. Which is not was eleven thousand dollars. So, yeah, I know how expensive it is.
Yeah.
Western Mass, the guy in Westfield, he's. Yeah, I know him well. He did online because. Used to clean extra five hundred thousand gallon tanks.
Wow.
You get a German there.
Christopher, I was talking about the uh the funds of the Storm Dam. That was transferred into another account.
Okay.
Uh and also that's to have a transfer to a. Account under in in my uh department, so I can draw that. That's that's my immediate debate for. The education and before to go on with.
Okay. Okay.
Probably about kind of weeks and we'll start looking around and ask.
Where are we talking? And you're gonna do them in Chester? Oh, Chester Road, I didn't. What right? Where do you put the catch basin to? Makes sense. Yeah, no, no, you're a hundred percent right.
I will not be here Monday through Thursday, but I'm sad to say that. Um I'm going to get my procedure done.
Okay.
Uh when you're coming up, Wednesday?
Okay.
I mean, James is going to be up there and I. He's off today. I'm really trying to do what's gonna be happening. There's a big session that needs to be a little more material added to it because there's no base. And that's that.
I hope that goes smoothly for you. Yeah. Okay.
All right, good luck with that. Yeah, I'll give these to it.
Are they gonna export them?
Uh no, they're gonna go even get it.
Really?
Yes.
They make me shudder. Hey, just a good question. I are are we the one shimming the road?
No.
Who's doing that? Okay, that's all part of the contract.
It's all part of the contract.
Beautiful.
Yeah, once he's all done, um we'll be so later um also coming in.
Lasting oil or to finder.
Yeah, and then then after that, I'll be right behind him. Putting down the fuel and stop iron, we'll be all done and I'm hoping maybe another two days later I get the lines made.
Now, where where Harshad Road, you can see the gravel. Are they doing something?
Especially up past. You know, a little floor around is not letting you say.
Yeah.
From there at about fourteen hundred feet.
Okay.
That's what I would.
Yeah, we're gonna add it um the image of mine all the all over the road all the.
Oh, okay.
Go Denver Road and come back this time. Thank you. And they should be listed all three days.
So when it's when that's all done and you're, are you gonna put anything on the side of it like? Pill or stone or? Depend, I know it's gonna depend on height then, right?
You you see how the rollers are ready?
Yeah.
That should be.
Looks like it's gonna be even pretty close. Yeah, okay, but if there are spots. Thank you.
The milling, um whatever, yeah.
Those those are about the worst millions I've ever seen in my life. They should have been left in place is what it should have been.
Well, thank you. I don't think so.
So you going to BMC?
Uh no, I'm going to the Crane, I believe. Uh, no, I'm going to the Crane, I believe.
Oh. I just.
Okay.
I hope things go well.
I can tell you, I, I went to BMC for emergency procedure.
Yeah.
I never had any pop. I mean, I didn't have a heart surgery. You know, but.
I, I, when I had my open heart surgery, they said they couldn't find a heart.
And we still looking for it too.
It's not just.
Amazing.
I called my brother at midnight and going, you told me my whole life I don't have a heart, you said they found one.
I'm gonna get a drumroll soundtrack here, just kidding, just, just for you, just for you.
Things go well.
Have a good one, Dave. Um. All right, uh, is, does Doris wanna come in? Do we wanna let her in?
This is gonna be a long night, huh?
Leave the door open if they're not talking on there.
Dragon.
Yeah.
Dragon.
Yeah, I don't, I couldn't hear him, CJ, when you were talking.
I know.
Sorry.
I'm getting hangry.
You're getting, I mean, you're hungry and she's getting angry.
For me to move this along.
You can bring back the, uh.
No.
No, we, we're counting, no, September, right?
We're gonna get through. We're gonna do it.
Dave, can you make any clothes out before we go?
I did it, I did.
I can't even open it.
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll go.
What do you think I'm not?
You can't do it, I'm telling you. It's okay, I mean, I know you wanna take this bet.
Yeah, you should, that would've been great.
You gotta get the right angle.
Ah, well, I guess you're used to being on a stage.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not so bad, I won't begin trying.
Wow.
I should keep food in my purse.
Can we, can we afford windows that open?
I can feel a bridge.
Oh, absolutely. You know what W B stands for?
Nope.
Water displacement.
Really?
Why I know this stuff, I don't know. Yeah, that's all it is, and it, it's very flammable, believe it or not.
I believe it.
Did you, did you read that book, Ripley's, uh, Useless Information?
Welcome, Doris. So we have the, uh, twenty twenty-two state primary warrant, you need approval from us?
No, I don't need signatures. Jennifer, sign it, I can still post it.
All right, so I got this right here. And it looks like you need, oops.
Oops.
Uh, a piece of tape. Just two little letters came off here. Um, okay, so you need signatures?
Yes, wait.
The sticky note came a little. The M and E per time came off.
Pretty aggressive, they're right over me all the time.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna sign it. And then you're gonna sign it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever, rip it off.
And then. Ask Joanne to get the town clerk, okay? And then we're gonna let. Uh. You get started on town administrator and that, and. And we're almost to Jen, chief.
All right, uh. Uh, sent around. I sent around a tentative schedule to the finance committee for quarterly meetings this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so hopefully this will kinda help us keep professionalizing, solidifying all the finances. Of course, I, I asked all of them, they know any of our candidates, haven't heard anything back yet on that.
Have we heard anything from the potential candidates, anyone, any fights?
I've been poking around, trying to find people.
I know, I know two moved out of town.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Okay.
On that.
Okay.
ADA transition plan, uh, we picked that up weeks ago, um, I'm gonna be sending around a questionnaire to all of the relevant departments. Uh, tried to whittle it down, so we didn't, we didn't have to answer some big questions, but basically it's. They, they said it's essentially a legal requirement, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna send that around, uh, later this week.
Perfect.
Um, Mastock Road, roadway departure funding, so this is some good news, uh, Mastock kind of. Reached out to us and basically said, you and a bunch of other towns have a few roads that have so many roadway departures. That we're gonna just give you, uh, equipment for this, so it's a abbreviated federal program where they essentially just say. Okay, you've got two priority areas, and so you'll get either. Um, you know, radar signs or some kind of other equipment. Um, so what we're hoping is that they will give us some of those speed feedback signs, and then they said you could put them wherever. The two roads happen to be down by the, the Otis Reservoir practically.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you can put them wherever you need them.
Cool.
And that would come with training for how to use the daylight.
I know, I was, I was telling Jenny, I was running for. I was trying to come out of my driveway, guy was passing fire station with a Suburban. If that thing wasn't going sixty-five or seventy, it wasn't, I had to act of stopping back up in my driveway, I couldn't pull out. And it's like, they need to have. Uh, I've, just something near every once in a while, so people get the message, hey, they run a radar in Blanford?
Yeah, yeah.
They come through like.
I know.
You know, you don't see it, well, you see some up on your road too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Question, Mary.
Yeah, what is a rural roadway departure?
That just means when a vehicle leaves the roadway. So it's a, it's a type of crash, so they, you know, Mastock keeps different kinds of crash data, and in this case. Instead of, you know, having a crash on the road, they actually leave the roadway. Um, so that's.
So they're not hitting another vehicle, they're going off the ditch, or.
Yeah.
They had one cocktail too many or whatever.
Maybe.
I'm just saying.
We can speculate.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, I just.
It's the vehicle that's going off the road.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Or recording, I'm such an.
And our, and our rural roads, right?
I'm sending you the map. So that's, anyway, that's some good news, so.
Okay.
We'll be seeing some equipment out of that soon, uh, moving along, more assessors, we put out a request for, uh, proposals last week. Um, again, anticipating that our current, uh, provider will be the only one responding, so probably have regional resource group. Uh, essentially the plan is to kind of transition to more of an in-house situation. Um, so rather than having these two accessories clerks who trade off and are from regional resource group. Uh, we would be looking to hire a part-time accessories clerk and have RRG take care of the training of that person.
Okay.
Um, and kind of, you know, gradually, they, basically, they would not be the office anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. So that would save us some money, I assume?
Uh, yeah, well, hopefully, at least in year two and three.
Yeah, 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 right.
Yeah, so.
In the past, we have had, um, in-house people. And it has been, um, problematic, but I think if we maintain RRG as training. Um, and there is good oversight. Of that position, then, you know, we'll be better off than we were, it just, it, it wasn't wonderful in the past.
Yes, no, and, and I think this is part of the broader conversation of what makes a consultant's.
Exactly, yeah.
Actually need, um, but Dave Hobson, you know, he, he helped with this RFP.
Yes.
So he's very much, uh, on board with this, and then, as I said earlier, uh, Chester just went through the same process of hiring somebody for.
Yeah.
Weeks, we chatted them.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Um, so more on that, uh, once the bid closes on September first.
Okay.
And then Chester, Lanford Police Department.
I know, I know.
I got to talk with, uh, with the chief, uh, this afternoon, I just kind of ran through some of the priorities that I've heard from folks in town. Um, you know, speeding, obviously being a big one, as we just mentioned. Um, you know, providing ways to help out our show years a little bit more.
Just.
Oh, yeah, sure. And then, uh, you know, making sure that, uh, either her or, or some officers are showing up at our COA practice and lunches.
Perfect, yeah.
Seems to get to know them, um, and then I also just gave her the, the outline of our kind of quarterly meetings with Chester this year. Um, and what kind of tweaks to the agreement we might be considering, so more on that come shortly. And I think she actually is gonna connect with Chips also on the, the parade and.
Yeah.
For that, so.
Um, I was gonna just, uh, ask, so, just to bring this up, I know I'd like, almost. Hate myself bringing up, um. Lavacas, just bring up every year, the fact that, um, the Blanford Fair, uh, does not hire town police officers to do any of the. So that's, we're at a, um, standstill there, that has never changed, um, I would love to see the. Lanford Chester Police Force be included somehow in that, um. FYI, it's a sore spot, it's brought up every year, Bruce was like, nope, 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 I don't know why, he wouldn't disclose his reason behind it. Um, but I think it is in our town, we do have a police, you know, force that is great, um, so it'd be nice to somehow include them.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
Oh. Uh. Some, some of the reasons because I was involved in a lot of that back then is that. The local police being part-time. And you need full-time attendance by the police there, and the state police do it for free. You know, and that was, you know, if we're, we're paying a fleet of a part-timer to be there. And then like, they're there for four or five hours, then they leave, and then we have to wait for someone else, any incident that happens on the ground in that departure. Leaves us open to lawsuits, so.
Well, I think. The Blanford Fair weekend, I think that the chief would just schedule people to be, you know.
Yeah, but, but the, the problem was back then, when, when these decisions were being made.
Mm-hmm.
Were that the police were, if they were on the grounds, and there was a call, they would have to leave the grounds.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the same with the state, state police, but they would also have an alternate come in before that state.
So there's probably a way to merge it a little bit.
I, I would hope so, but, you know.
It's about.
We've been in and out of police for a long time.
Open to change.
Well.
You're always open to change. Right, when would you wanna change something that's not costing us a day?
Well, I just think it's, you know.
No, they always, no. Did not allow the local police on the ground. And they were always allowed, if there was a problem, to assist.
Yeah, well, we can't not allow the police.
Anyhow.
Um, okay, just throwing that out there.
Good enough, uh, moving along, so this came up last week, uh, when we were looking at the, uh, all department expense report, there was an issue with the board health stipends.
Yeah.
And that completely. Um, it turns out accounting just had the wrong.
Oh, good, okay.
So they corrected.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's taken care of. Um, ongoing projects, so the open space and recreation plan, so this was something that, uh, Josh had been advancing last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and basically it got all the way to the point of state approval, and then the state took like six months to get back to us.
Okay.
Once they did, they said, you need to change X, Y, and Z, then it will be approved. At that point, we no longer have the consultant, we're working on the plan, ground will halt. So I finally, I got in touch with the Pioneer Valley Planning, they're gonna just take the, you know, technical assistance and wrap up the plan for us.
Perfect, okay.
And then a big part of it is ADA, uh, accessibility at those, um, at those, uh, conservation sites that the town owns, so.
Okay.
Talking to Nick Gates about that.
This has nothing to do with housing?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, that, you have the open space and rec plan.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
We did Shepherd Carm.
Yeah, yeah, so I think we can move on to your.
Tom Cotton. All right.
Yeah, I've got.
We, yeah.
Um, yeah, so the, the first one there is town planning services contract.
Yep.
Um, so this is the contract we have every year with P V P C to handle. Um, town planning services, and this year it's the same seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, we did have them stipulate their hourly rate because there was some, some issues with that in the past, so. Um, that's, that's all ready for your signature.
Got it. Adding it to the pile.
And then the next one, I don't know if anyone made it through this over the weekend, we had the comprehensive emergency management plan. Uh, this was something the chief moderator brought up a few months ago, um, essentially. It's the first step in emergency planning that we have to do, and, and it's a more detailed thing that'll come out of this called the concept of operations, and that'll tell you. Exactly what you're supposed to do with each instance and who to call. Um, so this is kind of a, a more of an outline.
Yeah.
Um, it is crucial for certain funding sources that we get it in place, and of course, we can always change it after the fact, so long as we. Record those changes, um, in the document, so.
So I did look through it, I didn't see a ton of changes, I was looking at it so that I could see the edited stuff. Um.
Yeah, most of the updates I made were to just clarify a few areas.
Yeah.
Um. There was just, there was some area that just did not have like a lot of detail about kind of scripting to the town, whatever.
Yeah.
Um. And. Uh, then I had Dave, uh, Jennifer, and, um. The other person, I need to see it. Uh, oh, well, chief moderator, also just take a look at it.
Yeah.
Our emergency managers, um, if we feel like, if you feel like there's more that needs to be done, I'm happy to, to work with that on updating it further.
I can't think of anything else, I mean, it looks pretty thorough, um. I, did you guys have a chance to look at it? I wouldn't know what to add.
The, uh, one question now, in, in this process, when is this new generator supposed to be installed?
Well, so that's, this is actually kind of part of that process, and we, we need, uh, a stamp in place that mentions this, it's a critical facility, and it is an emergency shelters that we can actually apply for.
So we gotta qualify for that first to get the.
Yeah, so we gotta have.
Basically.
Yeah. We need to have this planned in place.
Um. I guess one, I had a question, who is the, um, I don't know where I wrote it. Where is somebody? The. Emer- uh, emergency management director, is that, cuz it keeps referring to that, is that select board chair, is that fire chief?
I mean, chief monitor.
Yeah, great, okay. That was my que- that was the only question I had.
There's a, there's a chief, it's like chief elected official.
Yeah.
And then chief.
Okay.
You know.
Cause I was like, this is a lot of responsibility. So I'm glad to hear it's monitor, okay, perfect, sold. Um, do you need a vote from us to?
Um, that's a good question, I, I guess it couldn't hurt.
So I would make a motion to approve the um comprehensive emergency management plan um as revised. Is there a second? Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Beautiful.
Aye, and I'll read it.
Um, I would make a motion to approve warrant three for payment, is there a second for discussion?
What is warrants, is that what that is? What is warrant?
Is that a second?
Yeah, a second is to talk about.
Yes, second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I was, that's what I was, that's the one we already signed, right?
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we, we didn't have a meeting that day, so.
Alright.
On favor?
I just wanted
Aye.
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 Okay, are we moving on to unfinished business?
Sure, um, so
Oh, back up to chief.
Chief, yeah, she wants to get out of here.
So we just want to welcome you.
I wanna go eat some dinner.
I know.
I went, you weren't out there. Double parked, I just noticed. Steak please, turn away, no.
So, um, a welcome officially on board, um, how has it been going for you? Do you have anything, questions for us, anything you need from us?
Um, no, I had a nice little meeting today with Brett, mm, I don't think so, yeah, but.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
Oh, by the way, I'm DJ, so I know, I'm one of the, what, board figures?
Watch out for him.
I got, I heard, I go out and
Yeah.
Oh. Can I go home?
You may need to talk.
She almost knocked me over yesterday.
Yeah, you know what, you almost made me go out on work this time.
So things are going well so far? Good.
I did, I did uh have quite a little culture shock today when I realized the the distance.
Yeah.
I was on a call up in uh Skyline Trail, and just as I was pulling into the driveway, there was a call coming in from Main Street in Blanford, and I was like, oh, they're on GPS, I'm like, they know where.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It it works.
Yeah, good.
Just need one. The first time I drove to the water department, I was thinking, are we going to Albany or somewhere? Supposed to be running in town.
Right, I know.
I haven't even read it out, that one, I've been taking this, I'm really more
Yeah, good, um, we were talking a little when you were out about um Blanford police presence at the Blanford Fair, I know that you're not officially, you know, because he, they do the state police, but um I'm sure that you will have people around and
Yeah, I I was actually gonna have a conversation with him because I don't, I I haven't been to one for years since I was a teenager, so um, I don't know how that works, so.
Okay, yeah.
I will certainly.
Perfect. Okay.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll have people in.
Mm-hmm.
So.
For all that increased traffic.
With, with, with your lingering mileage.
I don't have any.
Welcome to the club. Now, uh, we have a couple of places in town where we have had the building inspector all and tell these people they have to do something with the mess, and uh I was wondering, does it, because it, I think, I see it as a health issue, then, then that uh like next to the store, there's a house that has a bag with lumber in it, with nails sticking up and that, it's been there for how long?
There's over two years.
Over two years or so, and i- is that an issue that the board of health should deal with, or how do we, how do we get this to, cause we need it to go away?
Yeah, I would say that you refer back to your bylaws on, you know, what what you have to do before, I know like unregistered vehicles and that kind of stuff, if there's anything in your bylaws, you can, you know, use that week, but board of health would be the next step, it's, they're not really, it's not criminal, so it's hard for the police to
Yeah, yeah.
We can certainly, if the select board was to say, we want to let her serve to them, say, we need to clean it up, we
Yeah, yeah, I think the only inspector has weighed in, I don't think
Say, why the board of health, there's nothing dangerous in there.
Well, with nails sticking up.
Would you go inspect it?
No, you can see him right from the street.
Um, yeah.
He's, it's his problem, it's his problem.
You guys are killing me tonight, are you doing this on purpose? I am so, it's seven thirty, and you're talking about the same, we've talked about this before, I'm going to murder you, I'm saying this in live meeting.
You brought it up, you heard that.
Right now. I retract that statement, but we're not talking about the nails anymore, okay?
Okay.
You got any real questions?
Wow.
Whoa.
Oh, my. Well, because I have been since lunch, thanks. Yeah.
Go ahead.
You see the Betty White commercial?
I'm bringing them next time.
Bring a lunch.
Alright. We're good.
Yeah, I'll add a lot more for you, um, you know, when it's over.
Perfect, welcome aboard, we're happy to have you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks to meet you. Alright.
You didn't say that for me.
Take care, have a good night.
Listen.
Alright, really quick, uh unfinished business, um, so I had my F Y twenty-three smart goal.
They're wonderful, I love them.
So.
I, they're so thorough, um, I, I was like, this is a great idea, I I really, yes.
Well, well, Josh started doing them, and so
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, with our resilient master plan and rolled that in, and uh I did the same thing for our finance team, so accounting for our finance committee.
Excellent.
So, we'll have
So then we will assess those smart goals, not this six month, uh
Right, yeah.
But the next one.
Yeah.
The progress, okay. Um, I just had a real quick unfinished business, uh Russell Pond, I finally heard back, they um declined our offer of five thousand dollars because they said that the pond deed, they reviewed it with legal counsel, and for some reason they were declining, they're suggesting that we um possibly give residents a refund for the difference. So it might be a conversation that we have with recreation, but I was thinking, um, we don't want to do anytime soon, but come the end of next school year, we take a look at offering like to pay half price for Blanford residents who wanna buy tags, I think it's, so I think for Russell residents, it's forty for the first tag, and then twenty for each additional member, but for any other residents, it's eighty, and then forty, so it ends up being like two hundred dollars for a family of, for a family of four. So if we even like with some of that money offered to say, you know, Blanford will pay a hundred dollars for a family of four.
How could that work?
Um, that's what I don't know, the logistics of it, but I know we put the money aside for Russell Pond, um, so it could just be that we're, the recreation is offering to help, um, yeah.
Yeah, because we could um just say, purchase your ticket from us, give us um fifty dollars, and we pay them.
Yeah, so maybe we buy so many tickets and then, yeah.
Well, what is their problem?
It's apparently a legal issue, so I don't, I, this is the third time we've approached. We're not gonna get anywhere, but I would love to see more Blanford residents being there, working there, I can tell you, there's not a ton of Blanford residents, so I'd love to see more Blanford residents take the opportunity, and then maybe even if there's something where we say, if you have, um, if you can show proof of, you know, financial struggles, and you are looking for a full cost, you know, maybe that's something that we can offer as recreation, so.
Or if you've got more than two kids.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Exactly, so we can talk about that in our next meeting, and the money's there, and we'll just figure that out. So that was my other. Check that out.
If we, if he can and Springfield Water and Sewer ever decide
Yeah.
To allow us to use the pond up there.
Someday, maybe.
I won't see it, but.
Um, alright, we got new business?
Uh, yeah, so I just provided um my, the materials for my six-month review.
Yes.
Um, I bet you, hold on, September twelfth, but we actually kind of are in a gray area.
Yeah, so I'm gonna pull up the calendar, um.
There will definitely be one on the twelfth.
There will be a minute.
I set the twelfth, and it could be as early as the six, offset number. If we decide, if we decide to have a two-day meeting after that.
That's what I get.
Now, I'm saying it out loud, it sounds totally
Yeah, right, um, no, that sounds terrible. Um, why don't we do this, so our next meeting is scheduled for the twelfth. If there's something that comes up in between, and you need us to have a meeting, then let's reach out and do that, but if if not, then
The only, the only thing that I would wanna check in on is the Iowa Fire Club.
Okay.
They might have some stuff to
Okay, so, so once you check in with that, let us know, and if you need to have a meeting, we'll, we'll pull something together. Um.
So, for the preference is the twenty-ninth of August, not the week of Labor Day.
Is that when our next one is scheduled?
Since August twenty-second.
Today's, yeah, we're not scheduled for next week because of summer.
It'll be September fifth.
Right, so I'm saying if we
Oh, if we have to have a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that would be, um.
Yeah, hope for that following Tuesday or before.
So for, yeah, the twenty-ninth or the twelfth, um, so as of now, the twelfth, if you need the twenty-ninth, let us know.
Favorite thing, I put it on the agenda twice for you to do, all department expenditure.
Oh, good times, um.
Are you gonna do a motion to move out of summer hours?
Um. So I would do a motion to move out of summer hours, starting with um September twelfth. Is there a second?
Seconds.
So, and going back to every week, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay, so this is done, this is done. And all department expenditure report, I didn't see any new concerns, it was that you you already addressed the um, the question about uh board of health, so. Did you guys see anything else on there? Alright, let me look down here. Um.
One I did wanna mention really quick, uh, so for my six-month review, honestly, I didn't have goals in place.
Yeah.
Started that, um, I did provide the job descriptions, if you can just take a look at that.
Perfect, okay, that'll work. Um, and then that is also gonna be linked to the paying increase that we talked about.
Right.
Okay, so, so you guys, we, we talked about, well, when we hired Christopher, we were looking at the hiring of the eighty and then um eighty-five based on the six-month review, so just so you guys remember.
So seventy-five it is.
Just so you guys remember, um.
That's just the paperwork that you did for the other.
Yeah.
I just, do we have more upper money left from this round that we have to spend?
Yes, but not, uh
Weren't we off a thousand dollars on that?
No, that was a redo thing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we can, um
So maybe next meeting?
Yeah.
We can take a look at, yeah, and our update. Um, and then if we need on the next agenda, anything about the permadi stuff, I know that we went back and forth a little bit, um, I don't know if that's resolved.
Yes, there's actually, I can provide a quick
Sure, perfect.
So yeah, we had, uh, we had Aaron come in, um, you know, basically the question is, he doesn't wanna have um town emails and stuff on his laptop, just a lot of different stuff on his personal laptop, that's good. Town business, um, so he's gonna, um, he's gonna re-log into it again, I guess he had forgotten his login. We're gonna set it up so that whenever there's a plumbing request, either myself or Joanne will get a, an email as well. So we can just keep on popping and make sure that he's getting it. And then, um, you know, long-term, you know, one issue that he has, and a lot of inspectors have, is just that they have to deal with different permitting systems, key permitting systems in every town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm gonna reach out to P V P C because we're part of this municipal IT collaborative, and see if they've ever
I thought we had the same as Chester.
We, we're the same as Chester, but it's different, you know, he has other town.
Oh, got it, okay.
So they all have different stuff, so. Or some of them might have our same system, but not
Chicken pizza real time.
Did you hear from Steve about?
I haven't heard back.
I don't think it's Steve, I think it's um permadi that has to do with.
Well, but I'm just talking, I was talking to Steve about setting up an email rule, so that's something Steve can actually do, so, I'll just email him.
So, this is where Aaron was pushing for the tablet again.
Yes, he was, but, I mean.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do that yet.
Okay. Alright, um, oh, you remind me, did we veto, did we say no to the surplus thing for the highway department? We had started, you had drawn up a
Oh, yes, so, so we, we kind of tabled it because, um, yeah, and because no one could really
Okay, so I wasn't sure if that was hovering somewhere in no man's land, or if we need to do anything.
No, I, I'm happy to take a second crack at it, bring it up.
Okay, perfect. That's all I had, you guys got? Nothing, that's what I wanted to hear.
Tired of listening to you spumplaw.
Meeting adjourned at seven forty-four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what did you guys think in terms of both videos?
I don't like him at all. Are we still on Zoom?
Thank you. I didn't recognize him.
Nobody here.
The first time he's ever been here?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, that's the one those, way around everywhere.
One hundred percent.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Jeff, you're all right.